At the. Pixel two. Welcome to uh. Shell Planning Commission. War five twenty three. Uh can we get the prejudice and season?
Sure. Stand. Mister flag. Please right handle your hearts. Eddie begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. And the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Roll call.
Commissioner Arvizo.
Present.
Commit uh alternate commissioner Fonseca. Absent. Commissioner. Uh oh, uh vice chair Hernandez.
Present.
Commissioner Muriel.
Present.
Commissioner Ramirez. And Chair Gonzalez.
Oh, present. A pool of the agenda, at this time, the commission may announce. Any item being pulled from the agenda. Or continue it to another date or request. The moving of an item on the agenda.
We're gonna. I I I have a request. Separate quest, I'd like to move the. Uh item presentation under non hearing after the public hearing. Uh just because we don't have an applicant and. And uh. I just recommend hearing the project before that presentation. So we moved item number two uh after the public hearing.
Yeah, so do we have a? Motion to approve the agenda?
I will motion to approve the agenda.
I will second that.
You're welcome.
With a second?
Me.
Okay. Okay, uh Commissioner Arvizo.
Yes.
Uh. Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Muriel.
Yes.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes. Okay, approval of minutes, planning commission meeting. Mid at March fifteen, two thousand twenty three.
I will motion to approve the nets.
Get a second.
I'll second that.
And that was uh Commissioner Arvizo?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And roll call. Commissioner Arvizo.
Yes.
Uh Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Muriel.
Yes.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes. Any written communications?
None from staff.
Okay. Public comment on non agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public. That is not on the agenda, but is it within the subject matter due. Judicial thereof. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Want to open the public comment at uh six oh six?
No one on Zoom.
Close the comment.
Yeah, I don't see anyone here.
Okay, so we're closing up pu- public comment at six oh six. Want to next item. Reports and requests.
Okay, um Chair, I just have one item uh for this, I just wanna just acknowledge that we have uh two of our our. Planners with the development service department and just wanted them to introduce themselves real quick since many of you are new. And uh you haven't met them to be familiar with them, so. I could ask uh maybe Eva, you wanna come up first and then? Introduce yourself and. Let them know what you do.
Hello, everyone, um my name is Avalara, I'm the planning technician for the city of Coachella. So if you have any questions, you can always reach out, email on. Anything, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Eva will be presenting, I think, at the next planning commission meeting.
Oh, cool. Thank you, thank you.
So this is Adrian Moreno, associate planner, so. And let them know where you came from too before this.
Right, so my name is Adrian Moreno, um you know, born and raised here at the city of Coachella. Previously, uh I just recently started here at the city of Coachella. Been about four months now, but previously I worked with the uh. I work with the band of Kuya Indians. Um so I'm here, you know, learning a lot, happy to help the city and it's uh nice to meet all of you, buying commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian, welcome. You you'll be seeing even a lot to some of the future projects.
Look forward to working with you.
Then then uh. Moving on to nine nine non hearing items. We wanna move that over then. That correct?
Yeah, so you can go on to. Public here rearrange rearrange the dynamic with the public.
Okay, so we're going on to uh public hearing. Calendar. Quas additional uh architectural review number. Twenty two dash zero seven. Proposed construction of a five thousand four hundred square foot. Industrial building for Jordan Central. Implement company retail. Farm Equipment Dealership provides. Sales, rental, service, replacement parts. Parking and site improvement location on two point five one. Acres at the northwest corner of Avenue fifty four in Polk. Applicant Chris Ellison. Continued from March fifth, two thousand twenty three.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Gonzalez, so Gabriel Perez, your development service director, this item was continued from the last meeting on March fifteenth, two thousand twenty three. So um I will go over the project high level since we went into significant detail the last meeting. Um and then kind of address the items that were requested from the planning commission from the last meeting. To further study. Uh to quick background, this is Jordan Central, which is posing. A farm equipment dealership um in our industrial zone. And so they have facilities in California, Arizona and uh northern Mexico. But they plan to expand into Coachella, this is the site at the north. The west corner of Avenue before. And Polk Street, and so again, it's in our industrial park very close to the civic center uh for the city of Coachella. Currently vacant, uh so the industrial building is proposed at five thousand four hundred square feet, it would be new building with parking side improve. Parking and site improvements, uh the total acreage of the site. Two point five one acres. Uh in terms of what the building uh would comprise of, which include three service space. A showroom and uh one thousand one hundred sixty one square foot parts room. Uh there would be roll up doors for the service bay and for the parts room. Additionally, there would be two offices, two restrooms, lounge and conference room. There would be up to ten vehicles that would be displayed on the front edge of the project on Avenue fifty four, and that would kind of be in the landscape area of the project. Here's a site plan, so it um and we reviewed this last time. Uh the applicant owns the the that whole site, uh but they only planned to develop a portion of the site. And uh and so they would do the the parking improvements as well as the. Um excuse me, the building, but they would also do the improvements uh along the frontage, which would include. Um sidewalk and and landscaping. Uh this is the floor plan, and so identify the showroom and parts room to identify. As well as the the two offices, the service area would be towards the north of the building. It would have the roll up doors towards the back of the building. Here are the elevations for the for the building. Um more of that enhancements are geared towards the front of the building that faces Avenue fifty four. Um and uh and then you have some of the windows that are also. Facing Polk Street. Um the less articulated parts of the building are the in the areas that are less visible from the pull up right away. Such as the west elevation and the north elevation. The applicant does propose uh two types of signs, one is a uh or actually three types of signs. The signs that would be placed on the actual building, um and they propose a gray, red and white colored theme, which is. Consistent with their brand. Um for sites that are de- development sites that are two and and a half acres. Or more, they're permitted to have an identification plan like street frontage. So uh it could be a monument sign um that six foot height. Or freestanding sign uh with the height of twenty five feet. So in this case, because they have frontage on two streets, they propose. Uh both text signs. So these are the wall signs that are proposed, which are towards the the top of the building. Uh but the total square footage that they're posing is consistent with uh code requirements. Um here is the monument sign, so the sign would be a total height of six feet. And it would have the branding for uh the the business. And um. And the sign face is consistent with. Uh what's permitted for a a project besides, which is twelve feet in sign area. As far as the freestanding sign, this is what's proposed, so it'd be a total sixteen feet. Tall and the sign face uh area twenty four feet, which is the maximum that's allowed for. Um a project of the site. Um another image that uh we did provide um to you at the dais is is some uh renderings that were provided by the applicant. To demonstrate what the height of the freestanding sign would look like, especially in comparison to some of the overhead facilities. That were um identified by the planning commission at the last meeting. And so there's an image of what the. Overhead facilities look like, which includes distribution and transmission lines. Um here's another um rendering with the view from Polk Street. And this is where they would intend. To place the. The item, you don't see the side improvements on here, but this is more for. Scale of the the sign. Uh so there might have been some questions by planning commission in terms of what what does undergrounding mean? Uh are I I believe our city engineer um. Andrew Simmons is also participating via Zoom, so he may be able to weigh in on some of this. Typically, we have undergrounding uh conditions for. For utility poles and lines, um and typically this is requested for. Um when the lines are distribution lines. So there's um in and uh I I believe Commissioner Hernandez has a lot of knowledge about this as well. Uh but there's a difference between transmission and distribution, distribution. Is is a little bit less, it's less costly to underground. Um and so typically that's the type of lines that we request to underground. Um so a lot of times you see distribution lines alone. Uh but in this case, you have both the transmission. Uh lines and the distribution lines uh together on the same pole. And so at the last meeting, it was identified, well, you know, can the distribution lines be under grounded, or actually all of them, right? And so we we discussed at the last meeting. Um. The applicant did provide a letter. With respect to the request and uh that letters included in the staff report. What the applicant identified is that uh they believe that. Being able to um. Address that. The the concerns about undergrounding the distribution lines. Uh would would be a cost burden, but they were also attempting to get. Um an estimate from Imperial Irrigation District. And they they indicated that that timeframe for being able to get. An estimate for the work was about two to three months. Uh but they provided an estimate in the letter just from, I I guess, what work colleagues that it might be about a hundred thousand dollars to do the work. Um so uh I don't know all the details about what was involved in determining that cost. But the applicant probably addressed that uh before the commission. Um the last point I want to address is just landscaping that we we brought up last time. The landscape plan doesn't show the sidewalk that's required, but it's included as a condition of approval. So you'll see a sidewalk across the the whole length that Avenue fifty four. And Polk Street. Uh I know another, one of the items that was brought up by the plant commission. Is about having uh three quarter inch gravel in all portions of the landscape plan. Doesn't show it in the lengthy plan that they identified, but it is included. In the conditions of approval. Um and so trees, shrubs, ground covers proposed, so these are the two trees that are proposed, the shade trees, mulga and tipu trees. Um. There is the shrubs that are proposed. And uh as far as the project is concerned, in terms of environment review. The project uh can't be considered categorically exempt as an infill development project. As it involves development under five acres. Uh staff does recommend adoption of the resolution approving the architectural review. Um and uh I'm available for comment uh or questions if you have any. The applicant is in the audience and happy to discuss the letter further, um Andrew Simmons should be available too, if you have any questions.
Can we hear from the applicant?
Yeah. Yeah, um. Yeah, unless there's any discussion.
Yeah, there's any, you know.
Bring up the, open the public hearing.
Okay. Open the public hearing at uh eight, six eighteen.
Uh good evening, Alan Robin, Douglas Construction, um representing the applicant in Jordan Central. I talked with Mr. Perez and the city engineer, kind of discussed the stuff after, you know, your guys' comments last time. And what's really come down to us is we understand the, you know. What you're after and understand certain areas, it makes a lot of sense. We feel that in this particular instance. It doesn't make sense to underground the distribution lines because. One, it's a cost thing, and two is. You already have two properties that basically. They join this property that don't have the distribution lines. Um underground, so you're gonna go from a property next door. Where they're never gonna get underground, make us underground three poles, then come back up and they're gonna stay above ground because, you know, one of them is, you know. The development services office that it is, that's. Two properties away, that's already been built, and so the city's not gonna come back and put those those distribution lines underground. So we feel that it's kind of singling out this project. In an area that you've already established precedence of not undergrounding distribution lines off of the transmission line. At an added cost to us, that's, you know, obviously a financial burden of the project. As well as time delays, because it's gonna take. Three to four months just to find out what the actual cost is, right, so. That's really. I mean, you got any questions, we already got it.
Thank you for your comments, I I certainly agree with you, obviously, right, you you've hit the nail on the head there. Um and that just. Dominos and cascades to probably the next. You know. Study session that we should have and. How should we go back and go about in? In dealing with that zone in particular along Avenue fifty four, right, and maybe we just create a. A this special district for that overhead levels there. You know, but that also to um. What do we do with the sidewalk in regards to the power poles, are we gonna me- meander at that point because the sidewalk, the? If we're putting sidewalk on curb and that power pole. Is what, three feet from the curb, maybe? Yeah, what's it doing there?
We got a ten twenty he's been here some.
Yeah, I I think it's probably. By the looks of it, um.
Uh you would be able to still put in the sidewalk, they would be. They're they would. Be obligated to make it curb adjacent. And so it looks like you have that distance of five to six feet between our.
Yeah, as long as we have, as long as we have it, right? That's my concern is when we put a sidewalk in.
What's uh? I'm sorry, uh. We got a ten foot ingress, egress, he he's been only ten feet, is that what his basic curve?
Oh, for for right away?
Yeah.
Um yeah, it's called out in the in the. Conditions. Yeah. You pull that period.
Do you have a starting date on your construction?
We have, so the way the process is, is we're in this architectural review, we haven't even started construction blocks. So once we get it approved from architectural review here, and we go into instruction on base, probably a six month process, we've done have a permit. Now we gotta finalize drawings, then submit for permit, get that approved and then we'll start, so I mean, average about six months from this point.
So they're still kind of. Review for my I I D, but I think that what's fair. Is that we set an assessment there. In a district where uh. It's fair for everybody, we can't just sing you guys out and say, oh, you guys gotta. Put the underground, I mean, so I think, uh, you know. We should take that responsibility of setting up the district and then, you know, proceed.
Yeah. That way, you know, we don't, we don't present any, just hit nerds in any future roadblocks, you know, by the commission, you know.
Yeah, once they bring a project to the table, they know what the conditions are in terms of getting your project approved.
Yeah. Also too, can you um, Gabe, um? Break down the, how the sign ordinance works there, is it, is the total of what they own two point five acres or what they're developing is on that parcel is two point five acres?
No, the total acreage of the entire site is two point five one acres. And so they're only, they're. Developing a portion of it.
Okay.
So the.
So they own two point five acres. And they're developing a parcel. That is. A fraction of the two point five.
Correct.
So how how does, how how does that work though, like? So because they own the whole, what they, obviously their property, they own the property, right?
Hmm.
So they're entitled to. The two, the the sign or?
Yeah, it.
I just hope we figure out that word, it's because I I'm trying to. Just wrap my mind around it, because what they're developing versus what they own is two different things.
And let me, let me pull up the exact wording of the the code section for you.
Looks like what they're not developing is a maybe a little under acre, huh?
Yeah. Okay. So the the way that the code reads is. Okay, for main signs for. Commercial industrial center more than one. So shopping centers in excess of two and one half acres of land shall be allowed one identification sign on each street. As part of an approved sign program, such signs shall not extend beyond. The property line or in the in the to the right away, shall be used solely to identify the commercial. Or industrial center. And so it also establishes the allowable sign area, which is based on ten square feet of sign per. Per acre uh to a maximum thirty five square feet. And the sign shall not exceed the height of six feet for monument sign, twenty five feet or freestanding sign. So um. So when it says. Shopping centers. Uh or industrial center in excess of two and one half acres. Um. Doesn't specifically say that the whole site is developed or not. In this case, it's not, right, so you know, essentially the planning commission could. Consider that um the full site isn't developed and and. Potentially, they don't qualify for. For uh both signs in this case, right?
Um just to clarify, there's, they proposed two different signs types, but only one sign. So it's only the single sign that where you put it, they're not putting more on both sides. So it's only the one in that at the driveway, it's either or.
Fifty four.
It's on fifty four, not fifty four then, oh, so it's an either or sign.
Okay, so.
So then if that's the case, the commission may wanna either consider what sign goes in there. Because. Because the what's proposed is a monument sign. And a freestanding sign, right? So if it's one or the other, it's probably good to have feedback from the client commission, because if you prove it. They keep, they could decide to do either or, but if there's a preference by the client commission, is there a preference by you then? If you do a monument sign or freestanding sign?
Particularly, I'd have to ask the owner about that.
Uh, is this a, can we, this can legal weigh in on this? Like, how do you interpret the ordinance?
This on, sorry. Is that fine?
I think, yeah.
I don't know if I don't know, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so. Gabriel, can you tell me again what the specific section is?
Yeah, that section is seventeen point seventeen point five six point zero one zero. Uh, for signs.
Okay, yeah.
And it would be subsection. F. And then. F.
From the time.
E, yeah. I'm sorry, F, um, F dot F. Where does that mean sign? And industrial centers.
You said there's not a preference from the owner.
I I'm not sure, I'm not aware of this, what they prefer.
Can we approve the project with a stipulation of. The two options of a monument sign and just.
Yeah, the plant, the plant commission could state what they like to see there, right? So you could either decide to approve either monument sign or the freestanding sign.
And and in my review, it is ambiguous, I think you. The planning commission can, you know, determine, I think it it refers to the overall size of the lot. Um, but you're right, that it doesn't specify one way or another, and what I would. What I was checking right now, I need, wanted more time is to see if shopping center was specifically defined in a way that would. Uh, would clarify what they're, what it's referring to, whether it's the whole lot or just the developed area. Um, but I don't see that the sign ordinance itself has a definition for shopping center. Uh, so I would advise, whatever the planning commission that deemed is a reasonable interpretation of this. Of the code, which I I think both ways it is, so.
Yeah.
And that was, I'm kind of, we should meet them in the middle somewhere, right? Because obviously they're not developing. Two point five acres, so I don't see, you know, how. Or why. You know, they should be able to. Build, you know, the free sit, freestanding sign, right? I I do agree that the sign is uh needed, right? Obviously. But I don't think that we should be the full extents of of the ordinance, seeing that it's not being developed, like, they can sell off that parcel tomorrow.
Yeah, so do you know, uh, from the owner, if uh they're gonna, you guys are gonna develop to the entire part, uh, two point. Uh, eventually.
There's no plan of it now, it'll, it'll be. Come into more probably tractor parking and I got, I don't see any, there's been no conversation of putting another building out there.
Right, so which sign would, would you guys like to see? There's three options, right? The small monument, the.
It's, there's, uh, there's a building sign, there's a sign that's on the building, and then what we're discussing now is the two options on the the street sign, the monument or the the pylon, yeah.
For visibility purposes, the pylon would be convenient. Yeah, if they wanna go for a more modern aesthetic than the monument.
And both of them would be in the same air, the same spot, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the site plan, it shows right at the driveway, there's one location for a sign.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we look at, there's a motion to approve the project and with a stipulation that uh. You can go back to to the owners and and see what what they prefer, but you know, uh. If we wanna make a decision on the sign, you know, let's just move forward.
I would go, I would suggest the the monuments, just for the simple fact that. The whole site is not being developed, right? Um. You go from there.
Anyone make a motion?
You guys agree or?
No, I know, I agree, and definitely for visibility purposes, I know that our anybody constantly get people walking in there. Um, because they don't know, uh, what's what or what building, it's very confusing for people, so, um. Yeah, I think that this is something that tolerates, the more, the more folks are likely to miss it, people don't really look up, so definitely the monument sign.
Okay. You'd like to make a motion to approve. Um. We get back to first slide number one, slide. You got. Adopt the resolution number PC two zero two three dash zero six, improvement architecture review number two two dash zero seven. Um, with the monument sign option.
We have a second to that motion.
I'll second.
Is the motion good enough? Yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to say one more thing before you finish your motion and your vote. The only thing that I would add, sorry, I wanted to have more time to review.
Yeah.
Is that, so if we look at section, subse- subsection, um. F one F. Um, there is ambiguity because of the way that it's ordered, it says individual businesses, shopping centers in excess of two and one and a half acres of land. Shall be allowed one identification sign. Uh, I think the you resolve that ambiguity by looking at subsection E, which is right above it. Which clarifies that that section applies to buildings that are on less than two and one and a half acres of land. Um, so I think subsection F would more reasonably be interpreted to mean, you know. Would refer to the overall land size, not just the development. Because if you look at it in the context of subsection E, which only identifies to those on land of less than two and a half acres. It's reasonable that subsection F would apply to more than two and a half acres.
Okay.
So I don't know if that affects your decision, but I just wanted to clarify that before you finish your vote.
Uh, it, but still in that case, there, it would be eligible for a monument sign. Those twelve feet or freestanding sign. And that would be. Yeah, that would be along the frontage of both. Um, of the project on both streets.
You said the motion stands, so I do not understand what's happening.
Okay, cool.
So you could still get both signs, either the the size is less than two and a half acres or it's over. So it's almost repetitive.
So I. Should we continue with motion? I think, yeah, I think we got a second, right?
Hmm.
All right, we're good, right?
Yeah.
Maybe continue the motion, okay, come and go vote.
You did, you guess, we seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Let me close the the public comment.
Oh, did you not?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, closing the public comment at six thirty-four.
Okay. Public comment at four, and then so there's a motion and a second, so roll call Commissioner Arvisu.
Yes.
Commissioner Murillo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, sir.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay.
Just one more.
We go on to item, a non-hearing item?
Yes.
And on here, minor eight, two, citywide development review process presentation.
Okay, so, thank you Chair and Plan Commission, um, I've had the opportunity to um, get to meet with. With you on an individual basis and. Um, learn a little bit more about what you're interested in and areas that you, what you'd like to learn more about. And I thought it makes sense to have kind of a primer about the development review process in the city. So that it's kind of clear what what your responsibilities are and what you're reviewing at the dais here. Uh, so I prepared this short presentation. Uh, hopefully this is helpful, and if you have any questions along the way, please feel free to ask any questions that you may have. Uh, so here's a map of City Coachella. Um, and so, you know, the city is thirty-two square miles. And, uh, you know, uh, this is the geographic area where the planning commission. Um, has uh some authority around land use in the city and how we use land. And so, you know, when we think about that land use authority, um, you know, there's different interests in how. Land develops in the city, uh, sometimes you have the developer. Uh, in this case, where we had today that developers interested in developing a farm implements, uh, company. Uh, you know, sometimes commercial center, sometimes it's residential subdivisions. Uh, but then we have the residents, right? The residents that live in the city Coachella. Um, they have certain interests in how the land develops in the city, and then you have, um, other entities like, uh. You know, sports associations that think that would, you know, like more parks or uh environmental groups that. Uh, sometimes want uh conservation. And then you have, um, travel governments as well. So, uh, you have different interests, sometimes they're competing, um, sometimes they are compatible interest. But, uh, a lot of times when you're making your decisions, you will hear from a lot of the different groups about proposals that are before you. Um, some of the guiding documents for the planning commission are are kind of the following, so there is the general plan for the city. And that's essentially the vision document of how the city wants to grow. Um, usually cities adopt a general plan every ten years. Um, and I'll go into that a little bit, but that's an important document. Uh, when you approve projects, you make findings for consistency with the general plan. So, uh, usually you wanna find that it's consistent with the general plan. Um, and and that's usually included in the resolution, so. The item that you approved today, there's a resolution that's presented before you, and we identify. Uh, certain findings that need to be made, so consistency with the general plan, consistency with the zoning code. Uh, so the other guiding document is zoning code, as I mentioned. And so that is titled seventeen of the Coachella municipal code. Uh, and so that governs all the zoning districts in the city, uh, different. The development review process, uh, that governs what you review here at the client commission. Uh, the other is another chapter in the municipal code that's about historic preservation, so that's in the building code. And that chapter fifteen point four eight, so you do have some responsibilities around historic preservation, I'll go into that as well. And then the last is under state law, making findings consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. Um, and so all all projects go through environments review. So you determine if, uh, the project will have an impact on the environment. And so the job of the planning commission and city council is to make sure that those impacts. Can be mitigated, right, to a level that's less than significant. Uh, so here's the excerpt of the general plan, uh, so if you were to find a project consistent with the general plan, what are the important thing? Right, um, you would find that the. If there's a goal like the, for example, this one, growth and development. Um, and so there are certain goals that are outlined in the general plan. Uh, but there's also policies that are identified, so you would identify. You know, if the project's consistent with the goal or policy and general plan. And it's kind of our responsibility as staff to bring up those items to you, so review the general plan. Uh, because the general plan is a, is a large document. And, uh, so, you know, our job is to make sure that we can identify consistency for the planning commission. So there are several required elements of the general plan, uh, this is the cover of the general plan for the city. Um, some of the things that, um, are included are land use, circulation, housing, conservation. Open space, noise and safety, so tho- those are required elements of the general plan. Other cities, um, have other elements that are, uh, not required. So for example, our general plan includes the community health and wellness element. Uh, so the city said it was important to look at health in the city, so we do have goals and policies around health and wellness. This is the general plan land use map from the city, and so there are, um. Uh, this is the map that we would use, so you could see all the different colors. And so there's just different uses throughout the city, industrial, um, residential and commercial. The other map in the city is the zoning map. So, um, the general plan establishes the 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 vision. And the land use, but there's also a zoning map that they're supposed to be compatible with each other. So this zoning map needs to be compatible with this general plan map, so. When you review projects, you, uh, need to review if if the zoning is consistent with the general plan. Uh, you do have some responsibilities with historic preservation, um, and so in the code it says the commission. Acts as an investig- investigatory and advisory body for historic sites and structures. Um, and the ability to, uh, request that preliminary surveys and studies are conducted, uh, for historic sites or structures. And you can request assistance from individuals. Um, with knowledge about, uh, cultural, socioeconomic, architectural, architectural history of the area. So we'll go back into this, um, because, uh, there's, um, there's quite a bit in the, in the, the chapter about historic preservation. And so I want to make sure you're you're fully aware of what those, um, duties are, and so we'll probably have another study session around it. But looking at historic preservation, there's a lot of history in the city, um. You know, a lot of city developed around the railroad, uh, and so we did, used to have a. Uh, a train depot in the city, um, near the railroad. And and that kind of supported the agricultural industry, so this area is very significant with respect to. The agricultural history of Coachella Valley, um. So, um, so that's important, but the other is the context of. Um, the the life and history of Cesar Chavez. And so he was influential in the city, so you kind of have those two elements that would be considered important, um, or. Maybe establishing like a historic district in the city. Um, there are design guidelines, um, that are adopted documents by the city. So some of the findings that you can make when reviewing a project are if they're consistent with old guidelines. So we do have residential and commercial design guidelines in the city. And that states like, okay, you know, you need to make sure that there's. Enough window coverage and there's nice pop outs, um, for the building and there's modulation, the wave, so everything doesn't look like a box. Um, there's a probable vehicle revitalization plan, which includes design guidelines for this downtown area. And then there's the Harrison Street corridor plan, right? Harrison Street obviously is renamed to Cesar Chavez, uh, but there are. There is a plan and the general plan does refer to that plan in terms of guiding development along Cesar Chavez Street. In turn to decision-making authority, hopefully this has helped for you to understand. Uh, where the planning commission fits in terms of making decisions for the city. Uh, so, uh, planning staff is is available, is it can make some decisions around architecture review for minor projects. And minor variances, the planning commission does have final decision-making authority around architecture reviews. And conditional use permits, also variances. Um, if the project involves specific plans, zone changes, general plan amendments. And the track maps to the parcel maps or entertainment permits, that goes to the city council. So I'll explain a little bit about what these mean, so a specific plan is basically like a, a document. Someone owns a, a large piece of property, a lot of times they want to create their own development standards for. Their project, so they can actually create a document that can be approved for the city for special standards that deviate from the municipal code. Uh, so that ultimately gets approved by the city council. Um, his own changes is, you know, your zone residential, but you want to be zone commercial. You have to get approval from the city council for that. Now, with those approvals that I mentioned for city council, the planning commission does review it. And make recommendations to the city council, so your recommendations are really important for those items that get considered by the city council. Um, general plan amendments, same thing on the general plan map, if, you know, you're residential property, you want to go to commercial. Well, you, that has to get approved by the city council ultimately. Uh, tentative track maps, those are subdivisions of land, so, um, you know, like a typical residential neighborhood. A lot of times that first started with the tentative track map, which subdivides property into the individual lots. Uh, tentative parcel maps are for maps that are less than, uh, five parcels. That also gets approved. That also gets approved by the, the council. And we do have something for entertainment permits. So anyone that's proposing entertainment. Uh, either outdoors or in the building, that gets approved by the city council. Um, architecture review is design review, right? So today you have an item, you looked at the architecture and the site plan. That's what you review. Conditioning use permits are for drive-throughs, um. There are some other uses that require conditioning use permits, but primarily drive-throughs. Uh, if you're appro- approving an alcohol license for a new business, that requires a condition use permit. And here's the, the basic planning commission, uh, process, right? So. How does it work, right? Like what, how does it work when it, something comes to the planning commission? Well, it starts with us, the city. Uh, sometimes the applicant. May go through an optional pre-application review process. And so they get an idea, you know, what, what is the city likely gonna require? Are they gonna require undergrounding? Or they can require street improvements? A lot of times applicants wanna know what the responsibilities are because they have to evaluate the costs of the project. Uh, they'll find, file an application with the city, uh, will review the application and, uh. Transmit it to different agencies for review. Um, once all agencies have reviewed it and the project is ready to schedule for a hearing, we'll schedule that meeting, uh, write the staff report. Uh, sometimes projects require environments review. So there are. Environmental documents that have to be prepared and they have certain timeframes that, uh, need to be addressed, um. And, uh, and then the planning commission meeting is, is scheduled. Um, and then ultimately, um, there is some work that we have to do afterwards, right? So the resolution that was approved today, that eventually gets signed by the, the, the chair and also the, the, um. The planning secretary. So currently I serve as your planning secretary. So I was, I also sign little resolutions. Um, and then this is kind of the council process and the type of projects that they review. So. You could see where the planning commission fits, same process, but, uh, after the planning commission. Those projects move on to the city council for their final review. There's a lot of, um. Regulations, uh, for projects in the city. So we do have to look at state regulations which are in pink. So there is CEQA that I mentioned before, the California Environmental Quality Act. And so that's making sure that there's no, there's, um, the environmental impacts of a project can be reduced to a level of, um. Significance that's less than significant. There is tribal consultation law from the state. So we, there are some cases where we do have to consult with tribes. In the valley about the project because there could be cultural resources. They could have sacred sites in the city that we don't know about. There's a subdivision of map act. Um, and then the ones in blue are just, um, things that we have on the books in the city, right? Design guidelines, municipal code, general plan. But we also have to coordinate with a lot of agencies, right? So, um, so like this project today, we. Send it to a lot of these different agencies. Um, you know, we have to coordinate with alcohol beverage control for someone who's posing alcohol. Uh, sometimes we have to coordinate with the agricultural commission. Uh, they provide comments. Sometimes they don't want you to bring in day trees from outside of Chela Valley. Cause maybe the, you know, there's a disease that's out there. So they provide comments, IED, um, since there are. Uh, the, the power utility out here, we coordinate with CBWD sometimes. And so you might wonder, well, why are we coordinating CBWD? We have our own water utility. CBWD have a lot of, uh, underground irrigation lines with easements throughout the city that need to be protected. Um, according to tribes, as I mentioned before, school districts, Burt Tech, Sunline, uh, Riverside County. Air Quality Management District. Uh, but then we also coordinate internally at the city with the different departments. So that's the building division. Um, the engineering department, uh, utilities department. We have our own water sewer. Uh, utilities in the city, which is uncommon for most of the cities in the Coachella Valley. Uh, public works, the fire department and police. So a lot of coordination. Uh, and then we have to look at the impacts, you know, to, you know, sort of biological resources, right? So, you know, there are some sensitive habitats in the Coachella Valley. Uh, I don't think we get too many like big horn sheep. Uh, but, uh, you know, to the north of the ten, uh, they do look out for the French to lizard. Uh, so sometimes you'll see that, uh, there's been a biological study prepared for some of your projects. Archaeological resources. So sometimes, um, if there was a cultural resource study. That was conducted, a lot of times they recommend, hey, you know, you need to. Investigate the project more and, and have archaeol- archaeologists on site. In this case, here's a kind of picture that demonstrates what that might look like when people are doing that work. Uh, so. Some of the responsibility of the planning commission is to make sure. If there was recommendations for mitigation such as, um, having archaeological monitor on site, then making sure that's in there. So, you know, here's all the different levels of review, like I mentioned. So, you know, um, there are some director decisions that I have. Those are more for minor projects. Uh, planning commission does approve some projects. Uh, on the other hand, they recommend some projects that need to get approved by the city council. The last thing I wanna mention is we do have a development map that's an interactive map on the city website. Uh, this, this identifies all applications that we've received in the city and identifies. If a project was submitted for review, so that's red. Uh, if it's, if it's blue, that means a project that is, um. I believe that's, uh, approved. And then, um, and then you have the projects that are under construction. So this is a tool for the public to understand what's going on in the city and we try to update this. Uh, every month, but there are pictures and identifies who the planner is and contact information. Uh, but other things too that you look at, sometimes technologies change. So it's just a, uh, image that shows. There, you know, the, the way we look at traffic could change in the future. So these are autonomous vehicles which. Don't, don't necessarily exist yet on our streets yet. But, uh, you know, there are changes to the technology that change the way that. We do land use, right? And so this example, which is more future looking is, you know, if you don't own a car anymore, then. You know, there might not be, be any for a driveway to the garage that, it's either there's no driveway on this picture. So things changing. As far as long range planning, we, there are some things that are gonna come before you in the next couple of months. One is objective design standards for multifamily and residential. Uh, architecture. And so this is to be compliant with the state. With respect to, um. Um, the requirement for objective design standards. If we don't have these in place, sometimes it allows for. Developers just to get over the counter approval from the city. Uh, zoning consistency update. So our zoning map is not consistent with the general plan map today. And so we're working on getting that consistent. So you'll probably see that in, in May. We are working on accessory dwelling unit pre-approved plans. So we do have a consultant that's preparing plans that will come in from the planning commission. If you approve it, someone that wants to build an ADU can use those plans and not have to hire, um. Uh, an architect to do all that work, uh, or save money on it. And, uh, so that will be before the planning commission. And then last is some zone, zoning code streamlining. So we are looking at some of the standards in the code and seeing if there are ways to streamline some of it, um. Make some allowances that we currently don't allow the city. So you'll see that coming forward. Could you click on that link real quick? So, um, I'll, I'll send you this link too. It's usually on my signature for my email. Oh, and press cancel. Uh, unfortunately at the press council on the prompt, but this is the map that comes up, right? So you could actually, so try clicking, clicking on one of the project. Yeah, I can zoom in. Um, or you can use the little dashboard at the bottom and click one of those projects. Project will come up. If you want more info, you can click on the link. And it'll take you to another page that will bring up more information. It's really cool. So just want you to know that's available. Um, you know, I think the biggest thing that we wanna try to do is. Provide as much transparency to the public as, as possible and provide the tools that people kind of use and, and with, you know, other companies. So, uh, you know, if you have further ideas, we always look for feedback and input on how to do this better, right? So I think we're the, the second city to do this in the valley. Um, but, uh, that's the end of my presentation. Um, those are the things that I thought were high level things that you should, might have questions about. When you are reviewing projects, but if there's, you know, comments or questions that you have, uh, we can bring other things back to the planning commission.
So how far are we on the ADU, uh, pre-approved?
Uh, we just started with the applicant. So they're in the process of starting to, to design. The different ADUs and how that's gonna work. I think they're gonna design something that five hundred square feet, eight hundred square feet. Um, and then also, uh, garage conversions. So garage conversions are allowed under the state. Uh, and so we do see a lot of that happen and a lot of times it's unpermitted. So we think, well, if we can have some easy, uh, plans that are pre-approved by the city. It makes it easier for people to get permits from the city without having to pay for the design work, which often can cost.
That's awesome.
We have, uh, some flexibility there as far as what else we can add. To what we wanna streamline. Like say, for instance, I know we do have like a patio. Um, porch, like what is acceptable from the city, but it's like really vague and limited and you. Like if you deviate outside of that, it requires some engineering.
Oh, yeah, yeah, um.
So I'm wondering if maybe we could maybe expand. That sheet, right? Obviously it's just, uh, it's a two-page PDF that's. Very, it's either this or that. And then anything outside of that is like, oh. Those people in the industry will tell you like, well, you can. Do a little more without needing some engineering work.
So, yeah, and some of our policies around that has changed with our new building official. So before people used to have to get. Engineered plans for a simple patio. And that's changed, but I'm not sure if there's like a threshold where we do require it now. But before everyone used to do it. So it was costly to do a patio.
Yeah. So it's a five hundred, eight, eight hundred and is there a thousand? Is it, my understanding is a one, two and a three bedroom also?
Yeah, so there, there's gonna be, um. Two and three veteran options.
That's good, yeah, that's perfect, yeah.
That's pretty cool.
It'll, it'll come back for you for, for, for comment. And if you have other suggestions when they do the design, I mean, it's gonna come back for public review.
Okay. I think it's all gonna be based on if they have a room, does it have a patio?
Yeah, that backs me up for sure, you know. As long as we, um.
Look at it.
We can, uh, meet the, the vintage year, um, you know, where, when their development was. You know, ma- constructive, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kind of put something like, you know, twenty-first century Spanish, in Coachinita, right? Not, you know, the meter architectural.
Yeah, if, if there's, uh, ever other zoning, um, requirements you wanted to evaluate. Um, you know, feel free to bring it up, um, during the planning commission meeting. Um, there is gonna be an opportunity at the study session that's planned between the city council and planning commission. You might have seen it on the future agenda. But on the nineteenth, uh, which would be the day of next planning commission meeting. We're planning to do a joint study session between council and, and planning commission at five o'clock. To look at, um, two of the standards we're looking at streamlining or that's for science, right? Obviously there's some ambiguity that we want to clean up. And, and this is a pretty old, it's a lot easier to read the sign code in other cities now. This is a pretty updated code. The others are parking standards. So I think we're kind of at the higher end in terms of parking that we require. Um, and so we would just wanna kind of present that back to the planning commission and city council and see if there's opportunities to reduce the requirement from the city.
Okay, moving on to, uh, informational, uh, for tentative future agenda planning commission.
Uh, just. Uh, we, I placed, uh, this future agenda, just to give you idea of what's coming ahead. Uh, meeting with some of you, this came up as a common theme, like, hey, how do we know what's coming up? In planning commission meeting. And so we can kind of anticipate what's coming forward, um. So we prepared this, we need to keep this as an internal document just for staff. Uh, but there are some cities that publish it. So if you find it beneficial, we'll keep, we'll keep doing this.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate.
Just gonna direct your question to legal counsel. I, last, uh, meeting I brought up, uh. The idea of actually getting, we have four new commissioners. And, uh, actually getting everybody together on a van and going, going out and taking them. A ride around the city and looking at, uh. Whatever they're interested in terms of addressing or possible, you know, just projects that they might wanna address. So the, the concern was the violation of Brown Act. If, if it doesn't pertain to. Do any particular subject, we're just basically doing investigative work on what the wishes of the commission is. Is there, uh, any way we could get together like that or would that still be a violation of Brown Act?
You know, I probably wanna think about it a little more. I'm sorry, I hadn't heard this inquiry before. Um, yeah, I, I believe that. We may be able to make it work. The, the concern is always that, you know. To the extent that, you know, the plan might not be discussing any business. Then, you know, if somebody makes a comment or something, an accident or something comes up, you know, you know, there's something, somebody makes an off comment, then there's a concern that, you know. You can possibly, you know, have a ground act violation that might arise, even if that's not the plan. Um, so that would be my only concern, um. So let me give some thought to it. And right now, Henry normally covers this out, but I will circle back with Gabriel.
I think what, what you could do if we can get your opinion in terms of the dues and that's what we're supposed to do. And I mean, so we'll get together, there's certain things we can't discuss. And it has to be clear, you know. Whatever it is, but I think it's a, I think it's a cool idea because, you know, we give a, we give our hands on, we're. We're taking a ride around the city and, and looking at what the wishes of our new commissioners are.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm, it's not, I mean, it's not unheard of to me that, that something like that happened. I, I can think, you know, I've heard of, you know. You know, another cities where, you know, consumers might go visit, it plays or something together. So I, I, I think that it's possible to be done, but let me. Circle back with Gabriel and.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So wait, wait to hear from me and then we'll make a decision.
Yeah, we'll bring it back to you. Um, you know what? One more thing I wanna bring up is, is the reason why Henry isn't here is that, uh, he is, is. He, he has a new baby. The baby girl, right? Yeah, yeah.
Congratulations. Yeah, kind of last minute.
All right.
Nice.
Nice.
I got a comment. Um, I just wanna thank staff for all the hard work and, um, that you gave up for introducing your staff. I greatly appreciate them, you know. Some, I know sometimes, um, turnover can be challenging. And thank you for being open and, and, uh. And putting your best foot forward. And that's including everybody, you know, the, every IT. Thank you so much for setting all the iPads up and our emails. And thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we got an awesome staff.
Yeah, and also to, um, the joint study session with Henry Lenny, I thought that was amazing. That was really cool. Um, maybe some more of those would be very helpful for the commission and, and for the city council. Also too, I was wondering if you could perhaps, um, create a SharePoint file. And just dump all the presentations in there, right? We got Henry, we got the historical, um, presentation that you gave also, plus, uh, this. Um, presentation you just gave. So that this, so that just, we have all access to it, right?
That would be really helpful.
Yeah, so.
Amazing, amazing. It's really good. It gives, for example, for me, it helps me know like, okay, well, tonight I'm gonna go back. Review all of this, um, and it helps me know where to start. Um, but amazing presentations. That is a really good idea. So that we have access to it.
And then also to you, just, uh, the, uh, I was thanking for the, the planning commission academy. That was really, that was very helpful and very informative. Um, one of the ideas that I came out of there was maybe perhaps hosting a housing summit. Uh, or we can really, really discuss housing and how to, how to work with all legislation that's been passed in. In Sacramento and how that really impacts us here at the local level. And then maybe really think about some housing solutions, right? And what we possibly can do. Um, also to, um, know that while I was there too. I was a bit aware of the planning commission handbook. So maybe we can put the handbook in that, in that SharePoint file too. That'd be helpful. Um. The, thanks for the, another item that we have there is the, uh, design guideline. So as we're looking forward to that. And so, and also to, um. Hammering down this, uh, special district on fifty-four.
Yeah.
And we can work with our city engineer, really identify those parcels there and, you know, just helps upstream line development. Those parcels there and, you know, just helps upstream line development.
Okay, yeah, I'll connect with the city engineer on that with the cool being vault or back.
Anything else on informational comments?
Just next year, the Plant Commission Academy will be, my understanding is in Long Beach. Usually it goes up north, but it'd be in Long Beach. So for those that weren't able to go, they'll have an opportunity next year. So we put that in the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just wanna thank all the commissioners staff. I'm gonna adjourn at seven oh six.